One thing that's one that emphasizes that all these expenses are funded only through grants or reserves. So it's not an increase in the budget for 2022. At one point, the reserves were taxed on the operational side that's helping fund these capital projects. And this one here is solid waste management. The area C doesn't expand. And this one's for the arenas for the parks recreation, which is a partnership between the town of Oliver and the actual area C. So these are the capital projects for arena. This project is contingent on us receiving grant. That is for the recreational hall, the capital projects to keep going. Next slide is capital project with parks reserve services. This is for the low work part projection area. So they have spawned capital requests for 2022. This day backdrop, area C is responsible for that area. And there's a $390,000 capital budget. And that's being funded through grants. This slide is an comparison for 2021, 22 budget. It shows 2021, 22 are very comparable. They are some major, one major project for $8 million for complicity that does increase the capital cost. However, that's been funded mostly through grants. Also, there's a $72 million carry forward capital projects from last year to this year. The inventory fee tax requisition for this year is $2,350,000, which is a $101,000 increase from 2021, which is a 4.5% tax increase. However, once you take into account non-market growth, it's 3.08%. What I also showed is how that $101,000 increased and why. And this slide shows the service, the amount that is increased for just area C. And why there's an increase? And you would be paying a percentage of that increase. That's why you'll see this has already reached the call system. There's one increase for $110,000 over the $2100 is based on for area C. And that's because the breakdown is based on assessments. And this is just a continuation of material increases continued. And this is finally the last one. As you can see, the total bottom right corner, it's $120,000 is accounted for on the total increase. There are some decreases in the budget and that's why it's not the 420,000. This is the tax requisition by service for area C. And this is something that is reviewed and voted on as a whole for the region districts. All directors look at this and have a control of the budget. And while the area directors as a whole vote on the total budget, the specific directors for each area have more control on the areas that are concerned. This is world work by department. While all the directors vote on it, it's the chief, the director and the chief that look at this and make the recommendations. So this is just a continuation of the tax requisition. This last few slides, this one here shows the tax requisition for each of the municipal areas. And this either occurs in Columbia or another, and also the Pennsylvania man. And this is the same setting except for that areas again for 2021, 2022. A fact that united the interest of them looking at the average taxes for value property from $500,000 to $1 million. So this is by municipality inventory. And this is just something that is due to the super. I showed the cost per capita. We look at any region, this budget, we see the costs attributed to each area and municipality at the assessment level. The higher the population, obviously, the higher the assessment, more the cost. However, the higher the population, the more benefits that are alive in that area. So doing a cost per capita shows that what the actual benefits are for residents. This is a straight paragraph that shows where everyone is in the regional district budget cycle. And this is information where you can view the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We are looking forward to repeat that on the 2022 budget.
Thank you, Susan Vino. And do we have any questions or comments to prepare now for? We have no questions for you, Mrs. Vino. Do thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
And moving right along to ID2 Eco Plan Trans presentation for Anne Marie Whitaker, senior planner.
Hello, thank you.
Go ahead, the floors first.
Great, thanks so much. I'm just going to share my screen first. Rochelle, though, it does look like it's supposed to say vote.
I'm ready, so you should be able to go.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm having a bit of difficulty. Randy, did you want to introduce the line for the show?
Yeah, sure. All right, we have Anne Marie from Eco Plan International with Deanna Cummings as well, who has helped out sort of at the tail end of this plan. This is our active transportation downtown beautification and wayfinding project. So what we did is we combined a $15,000 grant that we got from CITIT with $15,000 that we had previously budgeted. And we combined into this sort of $30,000 comprehensive plan. And Anne Marie has done a great job and we're excited. We're excited to present it to council today. I don't honestly have more to say, Anne Marie, so hopefully you're ready to go.
Anne Marie left.
Oh, no.
She might have had a connection issue. So I think I can share the PowerPoint just to get started for Deanna.
Sure. Yeah, Deanna, I believe, is just helping out as a research student, so maybe it's time for her to step up. Let's see it. I can start if you, I can, I can start to share the presentation if you can get it up, please.
Rochelle, can you do it because I'm having trouble with the DOWI.
I only have a PDF, is that okay? I only have the PDF of it.
Well, Anne Marie is back, she said.
Okay, second time around, we'll try. Great. And can you see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so thanks so much for the opportunity to, to present this today. And it's been a great work in progress and we're happy to be here. So this report covers the three interrelated, interrelated planning aspects. The active transportation, the wayfinding and downtown beautification. So initially, these were actually three separate projects that were actually combined to create a more sort of holistic look at the downtown and surrounding area. And so the active transportation and the downtown beautification, these two really, really looked at all the information that was existing already in many different plans across for the town. And, and the wayfinding was sort of layered onto that to develop a framework for a wayfinding program and to, that would maybe improve residents and visitors' experience. So, and I'll go through that in more detail as we go forward. So this project, generally speaking, had three, three major steps to it. It included that desktop review, as I said, gathering that all that information and prioritizing and organizing it. And then an internal review with staff and, and stakeholders that were involved in the process. In particular, the downtown committee really stepped up and, and did a lot of review for that. And then it was confirmed by a resident survey and some further consultation with some of the stakeholders as well. So all of that came together to create the final report, which is, which generally speaking is somewhat like, like a strategy or an action plan, I guess, for active transportation, wayfinding and downtown beautification. As mentioned, this included engagement. And for the project, it, we got in touch with staff first. And then we connected and shared the draft documents with the downtown committee, which provided input and direct input on that as well as through meeting. And then, and then we did that resident survey to prioritize those options that came out of that initial desktop review and, and prioritize different projects within that too. So, starting out, we initially looked at census data and found that in fact, very few residents in Oliver commute by bike or on foot. And that is actually a big surprise. It's not unusual for a semi-rural or rural community or area or small, small area at all. So, but however, we did, when we did the survey, it suggested that many residents of all ages do walk or cycle recreationally. And then roughly one quarter of residents in Oliver and surrounding areas would actually get out more and, and walk or cycle on, on streets and trails if they felt a bit safer. So out of the participants that responded, this is, this was the sort of part that, that we felt was really important in, in the why are we doing this? And while the survey doesn't or didn't include visitors, a survey of visitors, I bet that having a well-developed trail system would also encourage greater use on that too. So in the report, which I believe was distributed throughout to you, we looked at first, you'll see a number of destinations. So we identified all the different destinations within Oliver and the surrounding areas. And then we looked at sidewalks in, with those destinations. So we matched the sidewalks and identified key, key areas. We were able to confirm or, or identify new gaps in the, in the sidewalk network. And these gaps are prioritized and categorized into high priority, medium priority and low priority. And this was based primarily on the proximities to key destinations, along with additional factors such as traffic speed, the volume of the street. So basically, you know, if it's a higher, more cars and a higher speed, then, then we would prioritize it a little bit higher and then just filling in links. So we noticed that there was missing gaps in links from residential areas to key destinations, as well as identifying distinct neighborhoods or types of districts that either were emerging or existed, maybe in particular in the downtown area. So generally, things looked pretty good, but there is definitely a cluster of, of higher priority areas that were found within the downtown in particular, and, and then also several in major corridors, primarily Fairview Road and in the surrounding areas. Continuing with some of the findings, we also looked at intersections. And much of this was based on already this, this particular one, existing plans and work that was done by the town staff and input from residents. So comparing this work with the sidewalks and the wayfinding assessment, the intersections were prioritized as well to support destinations, address vehicle speeds, and then also based on frequency of requests from residents. So we, we would see sort of the same priorities or the same intersections that were coming up in some of the survey feedback or input. And so priority intersections were identified primarily on Main Street and then along Fairview Road with some scattered outside that area. You can see in the different colors. There was second priority along Main Street and then third priority areas were identified in the downtown in particular and some of the various locations in the surrounding areas. So that was some of the findings for that one. For active transportation, we also looked at cycling routes on top of that. So I'm just sort of building that, that layer of, of all the mapping that we looked at. There was already a number of formal and informal established cycling routes within, within Oliver that we looked at and the surrounding areas, for example, the Hike and Bike Trail. And an assessment of trail routes was completed with the intent to, one, connect various neighborhoods to key destinations that we had identified, two, to support a network of routes across and beyond town, and then essentially pulling all of that together to create a more cohesive network or trail system throughout that area. So that's how these were built out. And this map shows the proposed network of trails. And there's seven in total. And the report details these further with recommendations on the different trail types and amenities for each route. And like I said, some of them are actually, you know, there's pieces of them that, that are there too right now. And so when we went out to do the survey, after we identified that information and then put it out to get it, to have it reviewed, when taken to the resident survey, the results indicate that approximately half of residents support focus on recreational routes for the entire area as well as within the downtown area. Many residents feel that an emphasis should have been, should be made on safe routes to schools as well. And then a majority of residents responded, felt very strongly that the ditch or the canal trail that we were calling should be a formal multi-purpose pathway. And nearly half would also put it on the priority list too. So many other comments were received as well along with this, but these were some of the key highlights that we received. But some of the other comments received were ensuring accessibility for some of the network, lighting on the Hike and Bike and Trail and the River Rock is a very important route too. And moving on to wayfinding, so just kind of giving the good overview of, of the, the report overall. This was again layered on top of the information of all of those different routes. And, and we're focused more on the experience and, and navigation throughout this network. So proposed wayfinding suggests a really uncomplicated system. So starting, starting with something very simple and hierarchical to start out with. The idea includes three different types of signage. So one being the kiosk, that main destinations or convergent points along, along the routes. And then directional and destination signage at junction points and location signage for destination points. And obviously, this would have to be, you know, incorporated in the signs that are already out there today and, and worked with that as a program to progress. And so with this, it's, it's proposed a common theme as well and a color scheme to, that should be utilized. So it's not, we didn't have that in there, but proposing that, that should be looked at. And that this may build on an existing thing that's already proposed perhaps, or establish a new suite of signage to be implemented in the future. So either merging that with what you have already or trying something new. In terms of community priorities for wayfinding, the resident survey showed support for wayfinding along active transportation routes. So those routes that we identified. And there wasn't, I guess, one immediate focus area for signage, but an interest to move forward and, and to further inventory and identify some key, some key points for that. But you can see there's, there's kind of a split between where people felt there was, there should be emphasizing or which areas we should emphasize and which, which shouldn't be. In terms of wayfinding routes and projects, there was, the survey indicated a few key priority routes and locations for wayfinding and several additional ideas for moving forward. These include the Hike and Bike Trail, looking at wayfinding in Triangle Park, looking perhaps at a partnership that identified with local indigenous communities for naming or exploring downtown themes as a basis for conceptual design for signage. So these were some of the comments and just sort of priority areas that kept coming up again and again in terms of the survey input that we had received by reviewing it. With respect to survey input on accessibility and experience of the trails, many people commented a lot on trail surfaces, just being mindful of, of the uphills. And they were very interested in, in that wayfinding, lighting crossings, level of comfort, and then trip facilities were considered important facts to, important factors to consider with, with trail design, if it was new or upgrading trails as we think forward. With respect to downtown beautification, so this was the, the last component that was added in as it, as it, as it being like a specific destination for many of these routes and wayfinding throughout. So further to identify the active transportation routes and that wayfinding, the final layer looked at the downtown district in particular. And so there was a lot, already a lot of activity and ideas that were gathered for the downtown area. And so we heard that these ideas needed to be sorted and prioritized. And priority items here focused on implementation of key catalyst projects. You know, Station Street, Plaza areas. It focused on, people mentioned efforts for infill or temporary use of vacant lots in the downtown. Another key one that came up again and again was the facade or a facade program for buildings or existing buildings or up friendly buildings type program or project, sorting out signage. And that would be also a support of the wayfinding, ensuring that any wayfinding program is coordinated specifically with the downtown area and that there are continuing efforts and local initiatives for cleanliness of the downtown public art and creative seasonal efforts. That's what came out of, of that one there. Community priorities, again, included the vacant lots and the temporary use. So if lots were empty, many people suggested that temporary use was a great idea. Building facade improvements and then coordinated public art and active spaces. So activating spaces in particular seasonally, patios or outside streets. But finally, in terms of the, the report, we took all of those different projects that came up through the survey and that were identified through the desktop review and gathered from other plans, programs and added to through the stakeholder consultation and put them all together in a summary. So the report includes a summary of projects. And then you'll see that here, many of these I've mentioned already. And then the blue areas, the Fairview Road, multipath, the Hike and Bike Trail improvements, infill temporary use, building facade and wayfinding routes. Those were the key projects that came up again and again, that had a stronger community priority to them. But we've listed all of those in an order and for implementation. And so, what we did after that is just took a look. And we just did this recently, so it was added in as a follow-up to, to look at these projects in terms of the scale of cost for putting these together. So, because as a general scale of cost was, it was provided for, for future funding applications and efforts. So if you're moving to look at different applications for funding for these projects. And so the key projects that we looked at are the ones in blue was the wayfinding program, the international hike and bike trail upgrades and the ditch trail construction. So you'll see here the wayfinding signage that we added here. And then further to this, and then we also have the pedestrian signage. So those were both costing out as a scale. And then looking at the hiking bike trail and, and maintenance and upgrades, sorry, the hiking trail for the ditch trail construction and then the Hike and Bike Trail. And I can also, I can, I don't know, Deanna, you want to jump in and describe this a bit more? But it's generally the cost estimate was, was for a scale of cost to identify which projects would be suitable for, for different funding applications overall. The next steps moving forward from this is to, to look at your input for this draft report, this final draft report to explore future funding opportunities and identify areas that might fit that for some of these projects and then look at adoption of the plan moving forward. And Randy, if you'd like to add about these.
Again, Marie, no, I don't, I don't have anything to add. I was just going to suggest that, that maybe the 2021 census they use on this next, before the final draft is done, just because those numbers have come out recently.
Yes, they have, yeah. Great to have those two. Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks for your great work on us.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie. And I'll look to Mayor Council to see if anyone has questions or comments at this time.
Thank you for the presentation. I know this is one of our priorities in our strategic plan. So I think, I'm not sure if we're able to do it today, but I think it would be great to identify a project in, on the list of projects that we might want to consider requiring something that we could maybe get started on or compete in this term.
Thank you, Chair. I couple of questions about the report itself. On page five in your process, it was handed to staff for any changes and that sort of thing. And I just wondered, were any changes made at that point? Were things taken off the table by staff?
I think Randy and Sean both reviewed the report and provide some feedback. I don't know specifically anything taking off the list. And Randy, can you recall your memory?
Through the, through the chair, to Councilman Addis, I, I don't recall pulling anything off. Our Director of Operations has been pretty involved in this type of stuff for, since he's been here in the last 10 years. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but perhaps Anne Marie has a bit of knowledge on this. Sorry to keep passing it, but thanks.
No, that's fine. We did make some refinements to it, but just in terms of, in particular, I think it was, Dave would be the best person because he was focused more on the, on some of the, looking at the intersections as well as the sidewalks. And I know that there was already existing plans for sidewalks as well as intersections in terms of the capital plan. So when we reviewed the capital plan, I took a look at what was already there. We made some changes based on prioritize that were already, priorities that were already listed in there. But other than that, I don't believe that there was any specific projects that were pulled for from staff.
Okay, that answers that question. The next question, the map on page 21 of the report, I think it should include our Gala Street pathway that we have in front of the high school. I noticed that we come out of Lions Park and we go down Cootenay Street when we already have an existing pathway up on Gala. And I think it could be linked to Lions Park and to the Hike and Bike Trail as opposed to creating a whole new pathway on Cootenay Street and then coming up Fairview. I, I know the Fairview is quite heavily highlighted as well in terms of a pathway. That's quite a busy traffic area. So I'm, I'm thinking we should try and work. So I'm, I'm thinking we should try and work around Fairview as opposed to using Fairview as the, as the route. To me, that's, that's, that's almost a main street for town. I mean, it is not main street per se, but it's, it's, it's a very busy. That and Park Drive are very, very busy and we should find alternates if we can, rather than using them as the pathways. I think that would be a better choice. I think also that the Gala links very well with the canal pathway that's proposed. And I think that's important to show that in, in your mapping. No, that was it. Thank you for the report and I certainly concur with the mayor that it's important for us. It's been a priority for four years now and we haven't spent a dime on this in terms of pathways and I think it's time we did something.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, I also agree with the mayor. I think it would be great for us to maybe take a minute to digest this and then get back together. And some priorities, I really appreciate the cost estimates. I think that's great when we do look for, I think, opportunities in the future.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll, thank you very much, Anne Marie. The presentation is, see you again.
Thank you. And apologies to everybody that my screen was on presenter and I didn't realize that. So hopefully that wasn't too. Confusing for me. Thank you.
All right, hang on for a second, Marie. We've got one more question.
Thank you. Anne Marie, just talking about funding, is there any grant opportunities that you're aware? That are available in the short term or that you may, you think may be coming up shortly? That matter that it would be good for us to identify something and maybe apply to that scene when some of the projects are fairly expensive. But not out of reach, especially if you can get some grant funding.
Thanks. And yes, there, in the, in the report, along with those just three focused projects for the prior, the community priority projects. And there was some information about not just the funding opportunities that are possible for, for some of these. There was a few that were picked out and highlighted, but also. Possible programs that you could implement as well through, say, business or, or other means. And Deanna, you could probably maybe add to that with the ones that you had identified for those particular projects. If you're comfortable, I don't want to put you in the spot.
It's okay. Sorry. So, yeah, I, I did like a, like a deep Google search. And I found a few that I identified to do with like accessibility related funding opportunities. Or active transportation infrastructure grant programs. And the Economic Trust of the Southern Interior or the Canada Community, Community Building Fund. I did include information about each of them and links to, for all of them. So if you want to look and to see if it's like applicable to you, as an intern, I'm not a hundred percent sure what exactly would fit. But that I did find some that seems like it would be a good fit for what you guys are achieving here.
This is a follow-up. I think it would be great to have maybe which projects might lend themselves to the different funding opportunities. I know one for myself, the ditch trail is something that I think is very interesting. It's a fairly expensive project depending on how far you end up extending it. So, but the size of the project is, is around six hundred thousand dollars. Looking for what kind of funding a person could get for that. So if this could come back to council, whether. Future county, not too distant future, because we don't have so much time left here. But identifying what projects might fit into what funding opportunities would help with the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Moore?
Thank you through the, to the chair. That's what I was going to suggest. It's just, we will look into some of the grant funding opportunities. And then bring it back to council for adoption and after we made a couple of the changes and suggestions from Council Mattis as well. In the report, there, it does list the possible grant applications. A couple of them, the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, that's where we applied for, for the plaza that we're waiting to hear back from. And the Economic Trust of the Southern Interior, we've received a couple grants from them already. So, you know, we'll see if we get number three from them, but we definitely will have our consultants look into some of the grants possible. And try to expedite that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So looking for a motion, I guess, to receive your report and direct staff to bring back the grant opportunities to.
I'll move that council received the draft report and direct staff. And then council direct staff to bring back information or grant opportunities available for projects identified to a future county.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question then. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to item F one, public question period, corporate officer in the public.
We have no public sitting in the waiting room. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved in second then. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.